Welcome to the January 8th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. I'll ask everyone to rise and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Now, I'll ask for a roll call.
Frank West here.
Rulie Maselli here.
Greg Bendel here.
Kevin Kyra here.
Garrett DePalma here.
We've just returned from an executive session. And I'm going to turn the microphone over now to Frank West.
Yeah, I'd like to offer to the board, I'd like to offer a moment of silence on behalf of Mike Kelly. Mike Kelly was a gentleman that was raised and educated here in Wilmington. He was a United States Air Force Vietnam era vet, ordained minister at the Universal Life Church, former captain and chaplain, and current chaplain of the Wilmington Men at Men. He's the former commander of the American Legion Post 136, and he was instrumental in starting and founding the American Legion Riders at Post 136 here in Wilmington. For many years, he was, he helped officiate from a religious standpoint, the Veterans Day and Memorial Day services through the, at the town. And passed away recently, and I'd just like to offer a quick moment of silence in his memory. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is transmitting of Treasury warrants. Treasury warrant number 2424, 2424W, 2424T, 2425, 2425W, 2425T, 2425S, 2426, 2426W, 2426T, 2427, 2427W, 2427T, and 2427S. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept, Mo.
Second.
All those in favor? They are approved. Now, I'm looking for a motion to accept minutes from December 11th, 2023.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Approved. Our first appointment is with Elizabeth Lawrenson, the town clerk, on updates of the election.
Hello, thank you for having me. So every year, as you all know, I-
Welcome, Beth.
I come before you to ask for the housekeeping for the elections. So I'm going to be asking next, the next Select Board meeting to be, to vote on approving some of these items. I'm here to answer questions if you have them. One of them is the, my election worker appointments. I have given you a list, but I've modified it. Beverly's going to be giving you a modified list that includes one more election worker. I missed one, so I have, I have an updated list, and it will be to you before next week. One of the things that we, I am looking to do for the 2024 local election is to have in-person early voting at my counter. I'm trying to improve the results of our local elections and increase the turnout of the voters. And this might give them some convenience. They, they have to stop applying for mailed in or mailed out ballots to vote by mail. They have to stop that five days before the election. This can go up until two days before the election. So if they forgot, or they have an unexpected, something coming on that they can't come in on, on the election day on that Saturday, they can still come in up until two days before the election and vote at my counter with the staff. You don't have to set a schedule, but you do have to formally vote on it as a Select Board to opt into local municipality because some, some vote by mail in person is, there's a cost. In this one, I'm not hiring election workers. The state doesn't reimburse municipal early voting in person. So the choice is yours whether we have it or not. I'm not hiring, as I said, I'm not hiring election workers. My staff is going to handle it, similar to in-person absentee voting. So there's really no bad side to allowing this. And I also have to have you approve my March 5th early voting schedule. It's required by law that we have at least three hours for every day that we're open as a, as a town hall, and then six hours on the weekend. I am actually having eight hours on that Saturday because it's the last day to register to vote. I have to be there anyway. Might as well let people avoid confusion, let them continue voting until 5:00, rather than stopping after six hours. So I included that schedule in that packet. Again, this will all be voted on at the next Select Board meeting, but I wanted to come in and allow you a chance to ask questions. And the last thing we need to do every year now is appoint Chief Desmond as the person that assigns detailed officers to my elections. It's part of that, the modification of the law in 2022, and the Select Board only have, has the right to assign a detailed officer. It just makes good common sense. They, he's familiar with their union contract and how that they, how they, they offer up overtime, so. And you, we are allowed to do it for the year, so I don't have to see you before every election. That's it, that's all I have. I will be coming back to you before the primary for more requests to approve schedules and before the presidential election. But this will cover us through our local election for any of the votes that I need to have certified. These have to be sent in to the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office that you voted on this on this date and at this time and as a formality before I enter in my hours into our voter registration database.
So what you're requesting tonight will be voting on on our next meeting, correct?
Yes, yes, when it was put on the agenda, it wasn't put under Board to Consider. So we, we're not allowed to vote on it unless we have it under Board to Consider. So while I was already planning on being here, I thought I could answer your questions if you have them. And then I won't be here for the next.
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions?
Just a quick thank you, Beth, and all you do for this. So for the new in-person that you were speaking of, will you and your staff be able to handle it, you think? It won't be too much?
Yes, yes. The local doesn't have as much of a turnout, and people aren't familiar that they, it's not as well-known. I am doing a new campaign on Facebook to try to educate people on town meeting and elections and answer questions about primary. I'm going to be doing a visit to the elderly center to talk about what a primary is in voter registration and how to check it, as well as at the library. But this is, this is something that I don't think a lot of people know is available to them. It hasn't been in the past. It's the first time I've tried to do it for an election. And, and it, on another side of it, they're doing these postcards from the state to ask people to apply. It's an application, it's a little postcard, they did it in the past. But one of the options now is all elections this year. That includes the local.
Oh, wow.
So they're gonna, they're, I'm gonna have a bigger increase of vote by mail. So I don't think we're gonna get a lot, tremendous amount of people. We already have the vote by mail. We don't have a high turnout on Election Day for our local election. And hopefully, you know, maybe we'll have a little more interest in running and interest in coming out to vote at a local level. I think that affects your daily, day-to-day life much more than some of the statewide and federal elections.
Absolutely.
So.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have questions?
Yeah, um, thank you for this. On the hours that are posted, right? Are you gonna put the 24th and 25th of March on this, or my?
24th and 25th?
Because the last paragraph, it says the 24th and 25th. Are you staying open for voting on those two days?
I'm sorry, that's, that's an error. That should have been February, February, March 5th. The last day to register was February 25th. It goes through February 24th to March 1st. Did I, did I?
Oh, I, I thought it said that you have to have six hours the weekend of March 24th and 25th.
Six hours the first weekend, I know, it's the way I phrased it, it's a little confusing. Six hours the first weekend is what's required by law, and I actually scheduled for eight. So I scheduled two additional hours than what we're required to do on Saturday, February 24th. So one speak during regular business hours and six hours for the first weekend. So that 24th is the first weekend of early voting. I should have put the actual date in.
So then there's no voting in March 24th and 25th? Okay, because that's the way I read it.
They gave, I am gonna be doing advanced removal and advanced depositing, so I am gonna be here. It will be open to the public. Anyone can observe when I'm handling the ballots. So that's something the public should know about if they choose to come in or they're interested in how I process these, all these ballots. It's usually about 4,000. I, I open them on the, on the, that's Saturday. And then we run them into the tabulators on that Sunday, right before the March 5th election. And then the cards don't get printed until 8:00 on Election Day. So the cards go into my vault, they stay there till Election Day. When the polls close, I'm allowed to print the results from the early voting. It's, it's cumbersome, it's, there are six, six precincts, three parties. So each one has to go onto their own tally. Then I have to do six precincts and three ballots, and each one of those have to go for Election Day. So if you do the math, it's an awful lot of, at last primary I did for the state, I was here till about 1:00 in the morning. So we, the advanced processing is beneficial to me. And, and the state has, has improved it a lot as, as we've learned what works and what doesn't work for early voting. But it's, I think the first early voting election, it was a presidential? I want to say it was a presidential for two weeks, and we were here till 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. So we couldn't, we couldn't open a ballot till the day of election. And there were 6,000 ballots. So it was long, and we could only use one machine the first year we did it. So it was, it's extremely beneficial that they don't have us working on in-person early voting that weekend, and we can focus on starting the process.
And you have no issues with staffing or anything during, doing all this?
No, I, I-
You're prepared?
Over the years, I've narrowed it down. I use three, for in-person early voting, I use three election workers. I'm gonna do a team for the week, so I don't have to retrain them every day. They'll, so you'll have three workers that come in, open it up. And my, and my staff, depending on how my budget here, sessions go. My staff will also include, I decided to include an, an election worker for about 100 hours if the Finance Committee is recommending it, if it gets processed. This will relieve my staff. They'll be able to do a lot of filing. We have to file our applications, we have to file our ballots by precinct by name. And then when ballots come in, we have to compare the ballots to the signatures on the application. So we're gonna be having someone in the office just supporting my two staff members. Because we can't, you can't really increase your staff based on early voting when it only happens every other year. And we get reimbursed for this from the state. So any, any early voting costs, last year we were reimbursed six, over $16,000, and that gets transferred back into the general fund. So whatever the Finance Committee is going to be approving for me, I've separated my early voting costs for salaries and, and certain things that are allowed, like postage, that's gonna be coming back into the general fund. So we have a fund called a 29 Fund that uni, the uni polling hours, that it's a, it was a law that was passed that extended from seven to eight for the polls, for state and federal. And the state reimburses us anything out of our eight-hour workday on that Tuesday. So we get those funds back, but that stays and goes towards elections. So if someone were to resign, or someone were to become an ambassador and we had to do a special election, we have this 29 Fund that we can fall back on without costing the town of Wilmington money. Because that's been reimbursed in the past. And that's separate, but this, this early voting reimbursement does not stay in the 29 Fund. It goes back in the general fund.
That's good.
Mr. Chairman. First of all, Beth, between you, your staff, and all the election workers and everyone involved, phenomenal job over the years, it continues, so just wanted to state that. The one thing I did want to say, just for the boys, education here, is that one of the names on this list is my wife Karen. She's been an election worker for, I don't know, probably about six or eight years or something.
Long before you were, you were a Select Board member.
And what I did was is that I put in a conflict of interest, filed a conflict of interest report with our lack of conflict, conflict of interest with the town clerk's office. So when we do this next meeting, I'll, I'll be voting on it, but I just wanted to say upfront that, you know, that I do have a family member here.
Thank you. And just wanted to say, obviously, thank you for all your hard work and preparing for this.
Thank you.
And keeping us updated here tonight.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Whenever I come into town, into Town Hall, you're always there to update us on anything that's happening. And I really do appreciate, you got an outstanding staff. And there's times they don't get the credit they deserve, especially during election seasons.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair. This is another example of a department head and a department with their staff that just do an amazing job here in Wilmington. And when it's go time, we like to refer to it, their, their go time is election season, obviously. And as busy as they are, watching her and dealing with Beth every day, going through this process, i- is amazing. So the town of Wilmington is getting a good bang for their buck out of the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, have a good night.
Have a nice evening.
Okay, now we go on to communications.
Mr. Chairman, this one is a memorandum from Susan L. Emmon, Assistant Town Manager, regarding the authorization for fairs, bazaars, antique shows, and carnivals. This is, as you remember, we talked about this at, I think it was a couple of meetings ago, where the process for the, for the Fourth of July Carnival is no longer going through the Board of Appeals, it's going through the Board of Select Board. So this is what the, we come up with for an application for this process. So I know, I'm sure you'll have some questions, and Mrs. Emmon is here to help us out with this process. But this is, this is the application that was put together, again, like I said, because it's no longer with the Board of Appeals, it's with Board of Selectmen. So, and we also want to make sure the Fourth of July Committee has time to apply for the proper permits and, and see what they can do moving forward.
Questions? Anyone have questions? I know I've reviewed it and talked to Susan about it. I have no issues with it at all. I thought, I think, like anything else, it was done, and it was done right.
I just have one.
Sure.
I just, and we had discussed this about the times of, you know, setup and breakdown. I think I would just like to see that noted on this, that whatever time it may be, you know, no setup, you know, I'm making this time up, but nothing, you know, no setup before 7:00 AM, no breakdown after 10:00 PM. I just want that to be clear for anybody. So if we could come up with a fair time, just for the residents that are affected. Yeah, I think that should be clear on the application. Maybe like where it says equipment drop-off setup, equipment breakdown, maybe there's a little thing, you know.
No earlier than?
Yeah, no earlier than whatever time, no later than.
And part of the issue with, so just to remind you, you had a special permit application process before. With that, we had, and we had really one group applying in one location that we were addressing. Because this is now generic and could be multiple locations, those breakdown times could be different. And you could end up being way out somewhere where you're not gonna intrude on anyone.
Well, maybe then we-
Yes, and we would, we would-
Astric, residential area.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can definitely do that and make, you know, add some, add some language for that, so. But again, just keeping it generic. And I think that the issues that we brought up in the memo were really just the difference between having a special permit process versus you don't really have a process yet in this, in our department for this.
Yeah.
So I think the issues were that, you know, normally they pay a fee, you want them to continue to pay a fee. Normally, they get the abutters list for 300 feet, and they do abutter notifications in first-class mail. Do you want them to continue to do that? And then, and, because this is all gonna be a choice of, of the board, since they're, they're pursuing that. And then to run notices in the crier no less than two weeks before a hearing. So it's a little bit of a different process. Normally with ZBA, you have a hearing that you're notifying everyone to come and listen to. Now you're gonna have a selectman's meeting where this is gonna come up. Are you gonna do a notification process, treat it like a hearing, and say, you'll, we'll have to pick a time when we know they're coming in to see you, stay to that time, and then notify all the neighbors to, the abutters to know that that, that topic is coming up. So I think these are, these are a little bit the, the decisions that the board has to make. We can, we can draft something of a process and give that to you and say, this, this is just like the special permit process, but I just didn't know if you wanted that.
Are we going to put a fee amount in here? Did I, did I not see that, or?
That's the, that's a question for the board, and they used to pay $100 flat fee for the special permit process. So you can, you can tell me yes, and I can put a, a fee line on there, and that's not an issue, it's just you determine that.
And then on the last page, three of three, this is just kind of, since we're having the fire chief and the police chief sign off on the bottom, should the top part where it says subject to final approval of the Wilmington Fire, should it say Fire slash Police Department?
Sure.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of picky, but I mean, we're having the police sign off on it, too.
Yeah, I, I do know, we can do both. It's not, I'm not worried about more safety, we're worried about too little, right? So we can add that, that's fine. I just, we put them on there, and, and just so you know, some of the other things, like how many rides you have, all that. Because again, this is a generic application now, multiple locations. We took out some of that language, and I tried to be very transparent in telling you what was not here that would have been in his narrative, that would have gone to the ZBA normally. And we'll still try to follow all the guidelines that we've done before, mimic that process to the extent we can. Do you want abutter notifications at 300 feet going out for wherever an event is happening like this?
I would.
I would.
Yes, yes. I presumed you would, but I wanted to tell you that it's not part of this process right now, so we have to make it part of this process. And then, so you want the fee, you want the abutter notifications, and how do you, would you like us to handle the, you want us to get a solid date down for this, a meeting, like a hearing, if you will, and then have it here within one of your meetings and make sure that the town crier gets the notification in the same way they would have gotten it with a special permit application?
Yes, I agree with that.
Or they can apply.
Yeah.
They put the application in, we review it. If they put down that they want to come in at 5:00 in the morning and leave at 3:00 in the morning, we can say, no, you can come in at 7:00 and leave at 10:00. I mean, is that how you want this to work?
What I'm more thinking is that, are you sensitive to the fact that somebody in the neighborhood could miss that you're talking about this at one of these meetings and not get to put their two cents in? Like they would have with a hearing, because with a hearing, they would all be notified by the abutter and then also see it in the paper potentially. So if you want them to see it in the paper, I mean, you are gonna get the abutter notifications out. But if you want it to be set in the paper, it makes, it is a little trickier for us because we don't normally have that process going on in our office all the time.
But only people that get the paper are gonna see it, so it doesn't, I don't know how valuable that is personally.
Okay.
And I don't know that.
Yep, that's a decision for this board. I, I think it's gonna be a little tricky for us because you move your meetings around a little bit, maybe more than a ZBA does. And I, I think we're really, we'd have to have a hard and fast date in order to-
I think we can do that, I just don't know that it needs to be posted in the newspaper. I think that's just an additional cost that-
I think it's important that we notify the abutters.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Whether we mail them something, or whether we get, whether it's a hearing or a regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Once we get the application, maybe that should generate notification to the abutters.
I think-
Yep.
We can go on social media and everything else.
I think it needs to be on the notification, hey, this is gonna be at the board meeting on such-and-such date or something like that, that we can tell them. Because I just think posting in a newspaper, it's only as good as anybody buys that paper to see it, and-
So we would then receive the application, pick a date, and then have the abutter notifications list the date?
Yes, I think that's the best. That way they get them right to their house.
And obviously, we'll try very hard to make a reasonable lead time in front of a meeting, say, two weeks, maybe?
The sooner the better, but no later than that, right?
No later than two weeks? Okay. The abutter notifications going out to, do you see any problem with that?
So when we get the app-
It's just typically when there's a public hearing that has to be advertised, we advertise it. And then a copy of that, what goes to the newspaper, it's the abutter notification.
Oh, okay. Well, that makes more sense.
Okay.
Gotcha.
But the question is this.
They do. Right, right.
But it's just whether or not it's a true public hearing, and I guess that's the question. Does this board want it to be a true public hearing?
In that instance, you might as well make it a public hearing. The more advertisement, I guess, the better. And if the applicant has to pay for it, it's not, it's not the town paying for it.
That the abutters know and that, you know, if it's gonna work, if it works like that, as Beth stated, that when the ad goes into the newspaper, the abutters get that. I mean, they're getting the information, that's the key here, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't wanna, I just want to be clear, so that won't always be the case. So it's, for example, someone wants to have a bazaar or fair, they're not gonna have to come to a public hearing. Are we, are we setting a precedent by-
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and that is the thing I stumbled a little, to be honest with you, and that's why I included the language of the, of the article. Because this does cover other activities, shows, carnivals, bazaars, fairs. You really have to get way out in front of these to then deter, if you're having us come to you to figure out what you want us to do, then it's gonna be a double-visit kind of thing, you know? Whereas we're gonna have to say, what do you want us to do on this one? And then they go out and do it. And maybe that's what we need, a long lead time, so that we can make the right decision for each, you know, each activity. But I can imagine someone coming in late at some point, you know?
You know, I told, Mr. Chair, just as a follow-up, I know a lot of the churches have fall fairs and their festival trees. I'm, I'm just rattling off-
No, you're right.
...events that I could see saying, oh geez, do we have to have a public hearing?
I don't want to make it harder for them.
Yeah, no.
Through the chair, but what you bring up, Mr. Bendel, that, that's on private property at a church. We, we're not asking, this is just for town property.
That's for town property.
Okay.
Well, it's for town, it's for town property, but-
So if the-
Yeah, but if someone wants to come in and wants to-
If the Methodist church has a, has a yard sale or a fair, they're not filling this out for our permission.
Right.
But if they're doing it on our town property, then-
Right.
If they want to use the public light question.
I suppose, but if, if in some certain cases, I've seen the private property, they want to shut down a street, they want to do something like additional, then they have to come to us. Then those circumstances are, we do address.
Yeah, people do block parties, and they want to shut down a street, and they come to us with a letter, and we take care of it.
Yeah. And for most of these other things that come before you, you do this now without a special hearing process. So I don't, I don't want to add anything additional that we don't need to have. I think this is really just about the, the bigger, like a carnival that we've been having.
Mr. Chair, I would just, as long as the abutters are being notified, I don't see why this wouldn't just be an appointment on an agenda.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't think public hearing would need it.
True.
All right. Okay, so we'll, we'll put, we'll just put a little directive, something together, just so you can know what we all agreed on, and, and we'll keep that in our office. And I did back into the application, I think Mr. Kyra might have asked this question before, and I just want to address it. When I made the application, I took the narrative from the Fourth of July last year, and I backed into every single question and made sure if I omitted anything, it was discussed with ours to be, to make sure I didn't lose anything in that process, so, okay?
Thank you.
All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you wouldn't mind jumping to, excuse me, your only board to consider item here tonight is approving the process for authorization for fairs, bazaars, antique shows, and carnivals. I think you might want to add in the motion the changes that you spoke about.
Yeah, I, I think we should get the changes through the chair, to, get the changes first, and then, and then vote on it, so to table it.
Table it to the next meeting.
Till next meeting, because you're gonna put in the-
Not a formal hearing process.
Right.
And the permitting, $100 or $150 for the permit.
The abutter notifications that will be required.
I think, yeah, I mean, we have that.
Do I have a motion to table this till?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just before you entertain that, if you will, I'm just gonna take a wild guess that perhaps some members of the audience might be here to speak on this, so before we table- So before we table it, I don't know if you'd be willing to. Would you be willing to, and I'm not suggesting they want?
Would you like to speak?
Yes, I. I don't know if I can hear any questions. Patrick Giroux, 19 Brattle Street, I'm the chairman of the Fourth of July Committee. Just one quick point of clarification, the way the bylaw reads, it is not just town-owned land that this pertains to. It, if you go to Susan's email in the, in your packet, it basically lists out the town bylaw. But it's in all districts, any building or premises owned or operated by a municipal or religious organization, or a private lodge, or a club. So I just want to put that out there, that that's the way the bylaw is written. It's not just, you know, groups don't have to just come here for town-owned land. It's also if they want to use church land, club land, however you want to define that. Sure, thank you.
I think that was also to address larger events, all.
Yeah, when you're closing wells and.
Like the Festival of Trees would be an example, that would fall into that, I would assume, right?
So from now on, all of those groups will have to come and fill out this form and come before us. And notifications will have to go to all the abutters on any events that we have, or that they have.
I don't know about that. I know.
Yeah, because there's plenty of, there's a plethora of fairs and.
Oh, there's a ton of fairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're all going to have, now they'll all have to come before us.
Did they go?
They never have before.
Do they have to go through the ZBA for that? So why would we have to do that now?
I don't think.
Can we get clarification on that? Can somebody clarify that for us?
Mr. Giroux, just clarify.
So would that be the case, Patrick, that, I'm just using the Festival of Trees as an example. So if they want to use St. Dorothy's for the Festival of Trees, would they have to come before this board to, for permission for that?
I mean, it's a gray area.
Yeah.
I think you need a definition on fair, bazaar, carnival, you know, that's, that's the way the bylaw reads, but.
Right, right.
You're basically asking all of these nonprofit groups, these are groups that do goodwill for the town to either A, rebrand their event, which of course costs a lot of money.
Yeah.
Or B, follow this process, which now has fees involved. All we did last year at town meeting was to basically move that entire bylaw, how it read, from Board of Appeals to Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Technically, under the previous bylaw, it still said fairs, bazaars, carnivals, X, Y, Z. They never had to go to Board of Appeals for any of that stuff. I do think it opens a can of worms now that it's up for discussion, there's a formal application. Maybe there's been an oversight on the Board of Appeals end for years because it never wasn't forced for fairs. But, yeah, I think that this, this is a little deeper.
Sticky, yeah.
Sounds like we might have another bylaw change come April. Hey, excuse me.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
You do need a, your time period for approval for your event is, I just want, I want to let the board know when the tightness of that timeline.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very sensitive, this conversation is in regards to any group that can bring in any of these events. Of course, I'm here on behalf of the Fourth of July Committee. We are getting ready to, well, I should say, we are ready to sign contracts for, we, you know, hired probably 45 vendors for the event, whether it's music or, you know, acts, X, Y, Z, whatever it may be. We generally like to have the carnival permit in hand before we sign any contract. So at the carnival, we don't have a Fourth of July celebration, so time is of the essence. We, we are coming down to the wire.
Yeah, okay.
So through the chip, Patrick, I know you just made a comment, without a carnival, there's no Fourth of July celebration. I don't really believe that. I think even if you don't have a carnival, your committee does tremendous work and puts together activities for the, for the children in the town and for the seniors in the town as well, that I don't think a carnival is necessarily needed.
Yeah.
You know, you can still have a Fourth of July celebration without it.
I encourage you to join us at a meeting and see how much it costs to operate the Fourth of July. The.
I, I, yeah, sure.
I, I will tell you, since the pandemic, our insurance policy has gone from $5,000 to $30,000. And without a carnival, you don't have insurance. And without our insurance policy, we're not putting together a Fourth of July. I get very, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that like to criticize it. There's a lot of people that, that like to think they have good ideas. If you have a good idea, I encourage you to come to a meeting. It is not a cheap event to operate. It's a labor of love, we love what we do. The carnival is 60% of our revenue. You know, without a carnival, we, we can't do Fall Fest, we can't do a tree lighting. Of course, we have great sponsors that, that help us out, but that's only 20% of what we make.
So are you providing us the financials so we can look at that? Because in the past, we never could see them, we were never allowed to see them.
It's not that you're not allowed to see it, I just don't think it's, you know, it's just, just like any other private group in town. You know, if, 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 if any private group wants to provide financials, then, you know, I think you need to set precedent for that. I don't want to get off topic, I know we're here to talk about the carnival application. Of course, this year is a very challenging year because of the town hall school admin construction. So we are coming up with some creative alternatives here. You know, we're working with a lot of good partners in town, and we have a really dedicated committee. It's, it's, it's a very big challenge this year to put on this event. But we're just here to start the process, get the application together, so we can do what we need to do.
Sir, any other questions?
Think you got a motion? Do you vote on the motion?
I was getting ready to, Mr. Bendel. What were we promoting?
Tabling.
Tabling, yes. Do I have a motion to table this through our next meeting?
So moved?
Second?
I'd like to table it for further discussion as well, because I think there's. I have questions now, you know, because I don't want, you know, so I'd like to table it for further discussion at another meeting. I think we need to discuss, because I do not want to, to Patrick's point, I do not want, and Kevin said too, I don't want all these organizations that are doing all these wonderful events in town to raise money and benefit, to now have to jump through hoops and, you know, go through meetings and stuff just to put on their event that they've been doing for 20 years or whatever, or more, you know? So I just want clarification on that, Susan, I don't know if you can help, but.
Yeah, I was just going to offer that, why don't I just try to dig down, I'll, I'll talk to Mark.
I mean, in my opinion, don't, you know, it's the whole, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it type of thing. And if this is just a matter of moving it over to us, I don't feel we should change anything other than maybe simplify the process if that, but I don't want to make it more complicated. You know, and I feel like we're going down that road.
Okay, why don't I just try to get some consult from, you know, town council on the wording of the article?
Yeah, that would be great.
And then maybe suggestions and things that, how we can address this in an easier way.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, motion to table this with discussion to our next meeting?
I made the motion.
Oh, okay, second?
I second, I'm sorry.
All those in favor? So moved. We've got a lot of work to do on that.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next communication is a memorandum from the temporary town manager for fiscal year 2025 budget and finance committee meetings. I don't know if you want to, want me to read the whole list here. It is on our, I believe it's on the website. This has a list of all the different departments that meet here in Room 9. They meet with the finance committee and go over their budgets. The next one, the communication is a letter from Maury Healy, Governor, and Kim Driscoll. Lieutenant Governor, fair show, excuse me, fair share of amendment funds. These are the, when they pleased to announce under the new administration of Governor Maury Healy and Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, a total of $100 million for fiscal year 2024 has been allotted from the fair share amendment to support local infrastructure across Commonwealth 351 season towns. Passed by voters, the fair share amendment requires that revenue raised by the 4% surtax on taxable income over $1 million be spent on public education and transportation. And this letter certifies that your community's fair share appointment, apportionment of fiscal year 2024 is $357,738. Next one is the, from Tony McIntosh, Superintendent Director of Shawshine Valley Regional Technical High School, vocational, excuse me. This is about, they want to have a, determine if the town of Wilmington will vote to approve the Shawshine Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee's vote on December 9, 2023, to establish a stabilization fund pursuant to Section 16G and a half of Chapter 71 of Massachusetts General Laws. Stabilization, stabilization fund to be invested and to retain its own interest earnings and provided by law, and further set up or operational line to be created, transfer available monies to said stabilization fund, or take any other action, TAN2. That is their Warren article that they want to put on our next town meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is a Warren article that they want the Board of Selectmen to put on, right?
Right, right.
So is he going to give us more reasons other than just this, I mean?
I believe there was an email that was a little more information with it. You mean to talk about the stabilization fund?
Well, what the stabilization fund would be used for, the purpose of it, the reasons for why he wants to put this on, where is the money coming from? Is he going to ask us to include an additional amount of money in our budget?
They want to.
Or is he going to take the money that we budgeted to Shawshine? So for example, we, you know, they're looking for 1.2 million and they only need a million, are they going to take the 200,000 and keep it? Because normally it comes back to the town.
Right.
And into the town's general fund.
Right.
And is the finance committee looking favorable to this or not?
I know Brian Perry is.
There's a, I have a lot of.
Yeah, I know Brian Perry is, he said it's a, basically a housekeeping issue, so I don't know if they're using their own funds, but I will reach out to him and ask him for a little more clarification.
Yeah, because does he want us to budget in another X, Y, Z for his stabilization fund?
Right, I don't believe so, but I'm not 100% sure, and I did speak with Brian Perry on this. But I will reach out to him, Mr. McIntosh, and get some more clarification on that.
Yeah, I think when the finance committee meets, you know, John Dougherty's group, they can weigh in on this as well, I believe.
Our next letter is from Joseph Langone, President Northeastern Development Corporation, to Ms. Valerie Gingrich. As developer of Green Meadow Drive in Wilmington, I respectfully request the Wilmington Planning Board initiate the procedure of street acceptance by the Board of Selectmen in the town of Wilmington for next scheduled town meeting. As built plans have been submitted, the engineering division acceptance plans have been drawn and will be provided upon request. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. I know she, he's been working closely with Valerie. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, public comments.
I'll make one, I just am thanking you for putting out and saying that you would notify the abutters about the need.
Thank you. Thank you. Announcements?
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, I, when we spoke about Mike Kelly's passing, I just, I neglected to say that his wake will be from Nichols this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00, and the funeral will be Saturday at 10:30, starting at Nichols.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, okay. I just wanted to give a shout-out and thank you to the Wilmington DPW and workers. If you don't know, there was a water main break on Saturday just before the storm, about an hour before.
Yeah.
And they swooped right in and took care of it and did an incredible job before the storm hit, so just kudos to them.
During, during the storm, they didn't get that to a panel ever that night, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But it did happen an hour before the first snowflake.
It happened an hour before, but they got right in there and took care of everything. So I just wanted to commend them on a great job done and a crazy day.
I too want to compliment all the employees of Wilmington for this last storm, how rapidly they responded to everything, customary plowing. But we had a lot of trees go down, and branches, and with that, a lot of Lakewoods, and it seemed like the response was phenomenal. Again, I want to congratulate all town employees for what they've done through these storms. And anything else? New business? No new business? Important dates, sir?
Important dates. Through January 12th is curbside collection of Christmas trees. January 15th, Martin Luther King Day, the town offices will be closed. January 22nd, Select Board Town Hall, Room 9, 7 o'clock. January 29th, Select Board Town Hall, Room 9, 7 o'clock. That will be the town manager's fiscal year 25 budget presentation.
Thank you. Now turn the floor over to Mr. Bendel for salute to services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was mentioned earlier by my colleague, Mr. West, tonight we salute Mr. Michael Kelly, who served in the United States Air Force, raised in Wilmington and attended Wilmington High School, served as the chaplain of Wilmington Minutemen as a captain, served as commander of the American Legion, and the founding member of the Legion Riders. And as was mentioned, his services will take place later this week. We are thankful for his service, and tonight we salute him.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor? Good night.
Night.